This meeting is now called to order. Welcome to the Township Council Meeting, Monday, February 26, 2024. After the slag salute, please remain standing in honor of Deacon Joseph Cisco, a longtime resident of Little Falls, who's in internal arrest, was a deacon at Holy Angels, a member of the Knights of Columbus, chaplain of the fire department, and a recently chaplain of the police department. All rise. Councilman Patel, please lead us into the five.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the local building book located 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 4, 2024. A copy of the notice is sent to North Jersey Herald News in the record on the safety. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed to the Office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Present.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Cherry.
Present.
Present. If there's no objection, I'd like to take both minutes from the meeting of January 22 and February 12. Have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Murphy, second by Councilwoman Havletts. This is a roll call for the meeting minutes of January 22 and February 12. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts.
Yes.
Councilmember Ben Cherry.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Damiano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin the budget presentation this evening, I would like to provide everybody here with just some brief updates of things that are happening around town. First, next week, the beginning next week, the intersection of Main Street and Stevens Ave is going to have some detours, as well as some major and substantial work being done. It is intended that March 8, the entire intersection will be shut down for the duration of the day between school hours. The reason is because the new traffic light is going to be installed in the intersection, and the completion of the streetscape is going to take place. Once the new light is installed, the old one will be removed, and all of the slabs of concrete will be removed, and the entire area will be completed with the streetscape that we have intended to have installed in that area. So while we will have some detours in the area next week, we are hoping that that will be the end of it in that area related to the streetscape, and we will be able to finally enjoy the beauty of the new streetscape from, you know, both ends where it starts without this missing piece in the middle. So we're excited about that. Next is, on tonight's agenda, the council may have noticed that we have a CDBG grant being applied for as Resolution F for an application to Passaic County for a CDBG grant for Clarence Ave. And as we have been doing, we have been utilizing CDBG funds to redo a number of the roadways and streets in the area, in that particular area of town. This application will be for a request for funding from the county for CDBG funds to make the complete streets improvements to Clarence Ave, which will include Belgium Block as well as resurfacing of the roadway. Next is, anyone who may have driven by Wilmore Park this weekend for the past few days may have noticed that there was some machinery staged there, and anybody who drove past today may have noticed that there has been a removal and demolition of all of the current existing, or I should say previously existing playground equipment in the park. I met with the council members there this morning as the work was kicking off. Already by 9:00 AM, almost all of the old playground equipment was down. They were moving it into dumpsters as they begin to redo the entirety of Wilmore Park. So we're very excited for what Wilmore Park will be looking like in the next couple of months. They are anticipating this being somewhere between an eight to 10-week process. We are hoping that by the middle of April, the entire park will be completed, if not sooner, and we're very excited to see what it will be like once it is completed. Last but not least, the noise ordinance. This council, a couple of weeks ago, introduced and adopted a noise ordinance that was intended to assist the victims of the flood in making repairs to their home and allowing them to begin working on Saturdays and Sundays so that they can try to get their houses back in order. What I am proposing that this council consider is that effective, potentially May 1, let's give them a couple of months to complete that process, and effective May 1, or sometime around then, whenever the council deems appropriate, that we introduce a new noise ordinance that mirrors that of the prior one that prohibits work on Sundays and allows work to begin an hour later on Saturdays than this current noise ordinance, so that the people throughout the rest of town can go back to having peace if there's work being done in their neighborhoods and areas now. And I would propose that the council introduce and adopt a new noise ordinance that mirrors that of the recently approved noise ordinance prior to this revision of it that was recently adopted. Are there any questions with respect to what's being proposed there?
Mayor, can you just discuss what this CBG grant is?
Absolutely. It's a Community Development Block grant. We have used very similar grants along many of the streets in the X section of town to put Belgium Block and repave the roadways. We have been receiving between $90 and most recently $100,000 a year from Passaic County to offset the costs associated with installing Belgium Block and repaving roadways. It covers a majority of the cost that these projects tend to be, if not, you know, almost all of it. So we have been fortunate to be receiving these grants to make improvements to our neighboring roadways while it coming with a grant. So there is a limited area of town that these grants can be utilized in. Majority of them are on the west side of Route 23, with some of them on the east side of Route 23. And we have been utilizing these grants to make these improvements at almost no cost to taxpayers here in Little Falls.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next, I have my budget presentation. This is only the brief budget presentation. At the next meeting, we will have the more formal presentations that will be on March 11. But to kick this off and get this one going, I'm going to attempt to share. All right. This is the 2024 budget presentation to the Township Council. This is February 26, 2022. As we begin here this evening, just a brief review and summary of the 2024 current fund budget. The current municipal appropriations are $11,027,884. Our reserve for unselected taxes is $800,000. Debt service is at $2,721,124. Salaries total $9,27,403. Budget revenue totals $9,286,680, which leaves the amount to be raised by taxes at $14,295,732, which is actually a decrease from last year's total budget. It will be down by about $30,000 in total to Little Falls taxpayers regarding the Little Falls and libraries portions of the budget. And in just Little Falls alone, we are down about $110,000 in the amount to be raised by taxes, which leaves us in a very strong financial position. So that is some good news as we go into this year's budget presentation. As far as the local municipal tax rate, the 2024 budget is $884,863 under the tax levy cap and under the appropriations cap by $837,733. We anticipate that once the state completes its final calculations, that this figure may actually increase, which would leave us even further under the caps that we are not allowed to exceed. So again, we're in a very strong financial position here in Little Falls. In 2023, the assessed value of municipality was $1,547,555,300. And in 2024, the assessed value is $1,538,373,000. And that leaves the municipal projected tax rate at 93 cents. And in 2023, the municipal actual tax rate was 93 cents. You'll know that there's no change in the tax points per hundred dollars of assessed valuation over the 2023 tax rate, and the 2024 average home in the township was $394,000. For purposes of just an example here, a home in Little Falls that is assessed at $400,000 would have paid $3,724 in 2023. And in 2024, they will be paying $3,716. And again, this is in the local municipal portion of your taxes paid here, which is actually a decrease of $8 for the 2024 tax year. So we will have a slight tax decrease in the Little Falls portion of the tax rate this year here in Little Falls. In 2022, the fund balance was $3,770,67. In 2023, the fund balance anticipated was $2,278,000. And in 2023, the remaining was $1,492,67. In 2024, the fund balance was $4,185,268. In 2024, the fund balance anticipated was $2,800,000. And in 2024, the money remaining is $1,385,268. Now to get through some of the budget highlights. Our library taxes are up $77,977 for 2024, going from $651,432 in 2023 to $729,409 in 2024. And appropriations have been set to reflect salary increases between 2% and 2.75%, respectively. The collective bargaining agreements have been settled with the PBA, the Teamsters, and the International Association of EMTs. And negotiations are continuing with the FMBA Public Safety Telecommunicators here in town. As we move further, the public employee retirement system, the PERS system, has a cost to reflect, on average, per employee of $11,086.13. And there are no changes in the administrative positions in 2024. As far as police, salaries have been incorporated into the 2024 budget in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement at a 2% increase. And the police and fire pension costs reflect cost per officer of $46,282.80. We will continue with our vehicle acquisition program for the police, where we'll continue to purchase two new police cars in 2024. And you'll see here that this year, insurance costs are up $112,000 over last year. This is a figure that continues to increase substantially and exponentially every single year, something that we need to include and continue to include in our budget as we project moving forward. As far as PFRS pension costs, they have increased by $111,873. PERS pension costs increased $49,357. And in 2024, debt service costs are up from last year, $156,561. This year, as everybody here, especially on this dais and everybody throughout town knows, we had dealt with two floods in a three-week period, one in late 2023 and one in early 2024. And the total cost to respond to and ensure the safety of everybody in that neighborhood, as well as clean up after the floods, this is for both floods, was $125,000. Oftentimes, what municipalities will do is wait until the following budget year to include that in a budget as an emergency appropriation and pay for that over a number of years moving forward. Fortunately, we are in such a strong financial position here in Little Falls that we are able to include all $125,000 in this year's budget for both the 2023 and 2024 floods and still maintain no tax increase, in fact, a slight tax decrease here in Little Falls. So again, fortunately, because of the strong financial position that we're in, there will be no major implication to the taxpayers here in Little Falls, and it's not something that we're going to defer and kick down the road. We are going to just incorporate this into this year's budget and ensure that these expenses are just paid immediately. As far as capital budget, it is provided to the governing body, which addresses the needs of the township's infrastructure and equipment requirements. Once the council reviews these requests and authorizes the funding ordinances, we'll continue to make infrastructure improvements needed in the township. As far as the schedule for the formal budget, the introduction will be on March 11, 2024, following a more in-depth and thorough presentation, and the public hearing and adoption will take place on April 8, 2024. And I thank everyone for joining for the budget presentation this evening.
Does the council have any questions regarding the budget at this time? Mayor, can you, as you presented tonight, the library has an increase of 77,000. If I was listening to you, I'd be like, oh, council and the mayor is very generous to give the library 77,000. Can you explain how that application formula works?
Sure. It is a formula-based, and there's a calculation that goes into calculating the budget for the library. The way the library here in Little Falls, it's not just simply that, like the schools, where they request an amount, and that amount is paid to them. It is purely formula-based, and that is how that computation came to be.
And that would be, I think it's a three-year situation, like it's not every year?
Correct. It gets reviewed and increased or decreased every three years.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Patel.
Thank you, Council President. So there are a few upcoming events that the City of Clifton Department is putting on. The first one is March 4, where you can go to their satellite. So all of these events are going to be at their satellite office, which is on 207 Parker Avenue in Clifton. On March 4, between 1:00 and 3:00 PM, you could walk in for a free blood pressure and glucose screening. On March 5, they're going to have their Hope One van parked outside, where you can walk up and obtain support and referrals for substance use disorders and mental illnesses. That's going to be again March 5 from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And then on March 14, they have free eye screenings again at the Clifton Satellite Office from 9:30 to 10:30 AM. Anyone can reach out to me if they want additional information or want me to assist in making appointments. And then finally, on Friday, March 8, at the Clifton Health Department, between 10:00 and 12:00, they are providing free foot screenings. So again, all of these are open to Little Falls residents, and I encourage everyone, you know, to make use of all the services that are being provided. That is all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Havletts?
Thank you, Council President. Just some library updates. Tonight and every fourth Monday of the month, the library now has a garden club that would spring right around the corner. If you feel like you have a green thumb or would like a green thumb, you can attend the garden club at 6:30. And it's for all levels of experience and all ages. They're also continuing their delivery service. The deliveries are on Monday, and you must have a library card. They'll deliver straight to your door. And tomorrow, there is a New York Speaker Series. It's back. Tomorrow is the Great Ballparks of New York by historian Peter Laskowitz. He is beloved at the library for his speaker series. So if you haven't been able to catch it, you should try to catch it tomorrow night. The farmer's market registration is going strong. We already have over 15 full-time vendors and more part-time vendors. If you are an artist and vendor and are interested in coming to the farmer's market, you can email us at lfarmersmarket@lfnj.com. And lastly, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the contractors broke ground this morning on Wilmore Park. Thank you to my fellow council members and the mayor for coming to the groundbreaking, and hopefully everything will be done by spring, and we'll be enjoying a nice new park. That's all I have.
Thank you. Question on the park. Are trees going to be removed?
Trees are not set to be removed as of now. Of course, if anything happens while the contractors are there, they find any problems with the roots or any problems with the health of the trees, that can always be reconsidered. But at this time, the trees that are in Wilmore Park will be staying.
Thank you. Councilman Ben Cherry?
Thanks, Council President. Just a couple of things from me. One is next Saturday, March 9, at 5:00 PM at Wilmore Road Park. We're going to have our first ever Ramadan lighting ceremony. I have a meeting tomorrow night just to fine-tune all the details for the program that we're going to have take place on the 9. I'm just grateful for a number of residents that reached out and have been working with me behind the scenes to plan stuff, because we are going to have some activities for everybody. We're going to have some food trucks and other things. It should be a nice night, and it's a new tradition that, you know, we're going to look to have for years to come. Lastly, I just want to take a moment. I know we had a moment of silence earlier for Deacon Joe. Just want to send my thoughts and prayers, of course, to his wife Phyllis and his daughter Jen, as well as his two grandsons. I've known Joe a long time. You know, he was someone that, you know, being involved in the church, but also he was a councilman for eight years, and he was a teacher and a principal to my two younger brothers at Don Bosco, and for a long time lived on Hopson Ave, next door to my uncle. So he was a great guy. He was the chaplain for the fire department for a long time. We just had a ceremony recently where he became the police chaplain as well. And anytime he needed something, Joe was always there, whether it was the Memorial Day services or 9/11. I always got the text, hey kiddo, let me know what you need from me, and I'll be there. He was just a really good person and lifelong resident. And again, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. I do have one major thing to report on tonight. The calendars are in. They do exist. We weren't lying this whole time. They pretty much were delivered last week and the week before that. If you did not receive a calendar, I know the post office does have some stragglers in some of the apartment buildings. There were some nicks up, so they should be getting delivered this week. If you don't receive them, you could stop down at the rec center Monday to Thursday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, or 5:30 PM, I believe, and on Fridays, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I just really seriously want to thank Councilwoman Havletts for her help on this. She was the amazing part of getting this done, and as well as assistant BA, Vince Gudron, I know, wanted to rip our heads off at some point to this, but hopefully next year, this is a lot smoother. Got our bumps out. We can iron out all the kinks and get on to the rest of the work that we have to do. Secondly, I just want to thank the mayor for the budget presentation tonight. Look forward to working with Council President on getting this out. And it looks like it's going to be a good budget this year. I know we had some preliminary talks on it already. Lastly, I just want to express my condolences to the family of Deacon Joe Cisco. He really was an intricate part to our fire department and police department. I've known him as long as I've been in the department for probably around 15 years. He was always there for us. He was just great. Anytime we had a major incident, he was there. It was just warming to see him on scene, and you felt okay when he was there. So he's definitely going to be missed. I just want to express my condolences again to his family, and that's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murphy. As you heard, the Council Murphy say, we've been in some discussions about the capital expenditures, how that works. Since the council reviews the requests of capital expenditures by the mayor and staff, and we'll go back and forth with, I'll go back and forth with each council member and ask their opinions on these expenditures. For instance, our street program is a half-million-dollar capital expenditure, whether or not the council wants to keep that in or leave it out. These are items that we go through and go back and forth on and come to a final number and an allocation for each one. And I'm glad to say it's been a very good process, and we're very close to having that done probably this week. Councilman Murphy and myself, we serve on the finance committee. We'll go over the budget and meet with Mr. Kushya and then meet with the mayor, and we'll pick that up and see where we go with the items that the mayor has presented tonight in the budget. On March 15, we're going to hold our annual St. Patrick's Day party with the seniors. That's going to be at the Civic Center from 12:00 to 3:00. There's nothing like corned beef with some mustard and sauerkraut. Gluten-free. Not gluten-free. The fattiest corned beef I could find. It is unfortunately during Lent, so I guess we're going to have to have some pasta, which to fill those people that don't want to eat meat, unfortunately. There's never a great time to hold these events, so it kind of falls into that category. On March 27, Dr. Jack Zuckerman is going to be running a neat seminar on knees at the Civic Center. Pizza will be supplied, and that's at 12 o'clock. For those who want to attend, please reach out to me. My number's in the flyer. Somebody, Al Barless, from the 40th District, is coming out with some bill regarding stolen cars and which has been an issue in the state of New Jersey, and also home invasions. A221 and S947 increases the degree of the crime for unlawful taking of motor vehicles, upgrades to a third-degree crime, unlawful taking, operating, and/or exercise of control over a motor vehicle without the consent of the owner. This now would be punishable by three to five years in prison and a fine up to $15,000 or both. Also, the upgrades to burglary residence, the crime to a second degree requires mandatory period of parole ineligibility if a residence was occupied at the time of the offense. So I'm going to pass this on to the chief for him to review it. I think unfortunately, cars are targeted in this state, so I'm happy to hear that our legislators are working to try to curtail that. The senior freeze. Be of age 65 or older on December 31, 2022, or receive Social Security disability payments on December 31, 2022, or also on December 31, 2023, own and live in their own home on a lease site or mobile home manufactured or own since December 31, 2019, pay all your 2022 property taxes by June 1, 2023, and all your 2023 property taxes by June 1, 2024. Annual income was $150,000 or less in 2022 or $163,000 or less in 2023. So those that want to apply, please do so. It's a very good program. If you're entitled, I suggest that you do it. Our Hometown Hero Banner Program is going well. I would suggest, Mayor and the council, if it's okay that we put a flyer when you send out your tax bill to the residents for that program. Memorial Day is coming up, and we'd like to see some additional veterans get that information out. I'll also take the show on the road, and I'll go see the American Legion. I'll get in touch with Herbricht, the commander, and go talk to those veterans in the American Legion to also explain the program. Mr. Kretrow, would you like to talk about the SWIFT funding that we've had some residents apply for? I think we had nine homeowners apply.
With the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs and something called a SWIFT MAP program, mapping the acronym for Mitigation Assistance Program. This is a program that is supported by FEMA, and what it does is it identifies homes like the ones that were unfortunately affected by the two devastating floods in our community. And what FEMA does is it provides federal funding to homes in these floodplain areas and residents who are interested in raising their homes. So this is a great opportunity for some of our citizens and some of our homeowners in town to get this assistance in preventing this from happening again if there's another flood. So we have nine homes currently that were reviewed by FEMA. Out of the nine, we have three who are currently participating in this program, and these homes were basically affected in the Lewis and Williams Streaks areas of.
Thank you. Is there any questions to that?
Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything for the governing body this evening?
Just very short, Council President. There is legislation pending in Trenton, which is going to significantly change the manner and means in which affordable housing is set for all of our municipalities in the state. If you all remember, about 10 years ago, New Jersey Supreme Court declared COA basically to be a non-functioning entity. That was the state agency that for years set the affordable housing obligations for each municipality. Administrations had either ignored it or basically effectively defunded it or failed to appoint people to it. So the court had declared it defunct, and then the courts took over the process of declaring the affordable housing obligations for each municipality. And you may remember, many years ago at this point, Little Falls went through that process through a declaratory judgment action, which set forth the affordable housing obligations for the township. And the matter eventually came to a settlement, which prevented builders from filing what's known as a builder's remedy, and instead having them to live within the confines of the ordinances that you passed designating where affordable housing should be. We're now coming up onto the next round, and the state legislature has put forth this bill. It's known as A4. It has a Senate number. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but A4 is easy to remember, which basically removes it from the courts again, but sets up some tribunal of retired judges and professional planners and other such people who, we don't know who they are or who they will be. And they were going to set the standard for affordable housing obligations. And then the municipality has the opportunity to fight those numbers or contest those numbers. The whole system is really very fungible at this point. There's a lot of lack of clarity as to how it's going to operate. It's supposed to operate on a very strict timeline, which is quite frankly, almost unworkable. I know that myself and other members of the municipal law bar have all been watching this and have made commentary upon it. It was approved in the State Assembly recently and is now gone over to the State Senate. It's scheduled, it has not been scheduled to be heard by the Senate Budget Committee yet, but that's where it's sitting at this point. And eventually, it will come out of that committee for the Senate vote. And I would just ask the council, just something to be aware of going forward, because obviously, once that bill, if that bill gets approved, we're going to have to proceed forward with choices by this municipality as to its affordable housing obligations in the next 10-year round. Remember, these are 10-year rounds. So you had 2015, now you're coming up on 2025. And that's where all of this is coming down. But as updates come from that, I will certainly let you know. But it's within next couple of months, it's likely to come to a head.
Right. But council, so there is the, what this town has done in other municipalities, where they designated where the affordable living could be. Are you saying this new law would wash that out, or is that in years to come?
Well, you have to remember that each round sets a new number. Okay, because there's not, with whole system, you get into a 45-minute discussion. But basically, your number never really gets set infinitum into the future. It's always a moving target, depending on certain trends and projections for each municipality. And so what will happen in this round, regardless if A4 comes into place or not, there's going to be an obligation for round. This is round three. There's round four. Okay, so you had round one, round two, round three. So you either met those obligations in those rounds, or they just kind of pushed up into round four. So now what you didn't do in the prior round is now known as unmet need in the next round, as opposed to prospective need in the new round. Basically, it's just revising the numbers. And we had, and for those of you who are on council at the time, remember, you know, we had a very good settlement last time. It was worked on very hard by my predecessors, Leslie London from McManam in Scotland, who did a very nice job and worked well with the special master signed, Mr. Burgess. So but I, that system is, it may fundamentally change in the next round, which means that we have to, I have to keep an eye on it, and I will keep you informed of it as well as administration and the mayor.
We greatly appreciate you bringing that to the forefront. You know, we're only 2.8 square miles, so changes like that could be a devastating blow to this community. So thank you for bringing that information forward. Have a motion to open to the public for agenda items. So moved by Councilman Cherry, second by Councilwoman Havlitz. Voice vote, all those in favor. All those opposed, motion carries. Miss, Madam Clerk?
Anyone wishing to address the town, the council may do so to the council president. Prefer to be given a name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, however appropriate, may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the council president. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and side or provide comments shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will queue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves, and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. Mr. Kushya, anyone in the chat room that would like to come before us? Seeing no one come before us in the council chambers, have a motion to close. Moved by Councilman Vincery.
Second.
Second by Councilman Murphy. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilwoman Havlitz. This is a roll call for the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Council President, so moved.
Yes. Have a motion to open the meeting for general, for public and general matters.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vincery, second by Councilwoman Havlitz. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Anyone wishing to address the town, the council may do so to the council president. It is preferred to be given a name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the council president. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and side or provide comments shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will queue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves, and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who join the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. Mr. Kushya, anyone in the chat room? Seeing no one come before us in the council chambers, have a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vincery.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havlitz. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries. At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilwoman Havlitz. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, want to thank the staff for assisting in putting on this meeting. This meeting is now adjourned.